All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our city council work session here on Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, four thirty P M. Of course, we're here in the city council chambers, calling the meeting officially to order. Angie, a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Thank you. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act of the state of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. No formal vote or action will be taken during this meeting as it is a work session. I repeat, no formal vote or action will be taken during the meeting as it is a work session. I want to thank Mr. Tom Kent and Chris Haggard from NPD for being here. We appreciate it. Also, the NPPD board members Rusty Kemp and Kirk Olson. Thank you, guys, for being here. Appreciate your presence. The single agenda item for this work session is a presentation by Nebraska Public Power District, NPPD, on the twenty twenty six wholesale power contract. Gentlemen, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you and good afternoon. As indicated, I'm Tom Kemp, President and CEO of Nebraska Public Power District headquartered in Columbus, Nebraska. It's a pleasure to be here today to talk with you about a revised, updated, renewed wholesale power contract that we're presenting to our customers. And before I get into the discussion and provide some background and stuff and get into the specifics, I'm going to start with, start with the why. Okay, we are in, at the halfway point of an existing contract that was signed in twenty sixteen. There's ten years life left on it. We're also at a point where we're seeing major load growth across the state of Nebraska. And hopefully, a lot of that, not hopefully, but a lot of that is coming to the rural communities we serve around the state in the form of bioeconomy, clean fertilizer, data centers in some instances. But we see in the next few years, seven hundred megawatts of firm load growth that we expect to happen and another six hundred or so megawatts of load growth that we, that we are working through the process right now. And I know we've been out in the community, working with Mr. Pierceall and others on trying to land other big projects into this, into this part of the state, into the North Platte area. So that's, that's one of the big drivers. The other big driver is we're part of the Southwest Power Pool. The Southwest Power Pool is fourteen states that includes all of Nebraska for the most part. And the Southwest Power Pool is, is updating their requirements for their utilities like NPPD that are, are considered load responsible entities. We're responsible for serving the load within our service territory, and we have certain regulatory requirements we have to meet to ensure reliability and to ensure resiliency. So one of the tools that the Southwest Power Pool uses in terms of ensuring that we're all doing our share to meet the overall reliability of the fourteen state footprint is to address resource adequacy. Resource adequacy basically says that the load responsible entities have enough generation available in that extreme case where something extraordinary has happened, a weather event, a loss of major generation and transmission systems, to ensure a reasonable amount of, of probability that the load can continue to be served. And historically, that's been looked at a one day and ten year kind of a thing. So it looks like a nine point nine 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 seven reliability is kind of the historical standard there. So the way the Southwest Power Pool approaches this, is they assess the adequacy of all the load responsible energy entities' resources. And in the case of the generating utilities like NPPD, they set expectations for how much generation we have to have from a planning perspective. And those expectations are going up. As the load grows, as the resource mix changes for all of the utilities across the footprint, those expectations are growing, are going up. So that impacts our need for more generation. The primary driver again is the new load coming to Nebraska, the new load coming to our rural communities that we serve. And to me, that's really exciting. So we're going to build in the next six or seven years around fourteen hundred megawatts of new generation. That's going to be about a three billion dollar, two point six, two point seven billion dollar investment in the state of Nebraska and resources to improve the service and meet the growing load in Nebraska. The way we pay for that is much like the city. When you make major investments, you can issue revenue bonds or you collect sales tax, right? We can't collect sales tax, but we can issue revenue bonds. And those revenue bonds are based on our credit worthiness. And our credit worthiness is based on the contracts we have with you and our other wholesale power customers. So we're at the point where we need to invest in the future. It's growing the state of Nebraska. It's growing the economy of the state. And this contract is how we formalize what for this community and NPPD has been a well over fifty year relationship. One of our parent cities was headquartered right here in North Platte, Nebraska, Platte Valley Public Power and Irrigation District. You can look at the facility every day in North Platte, Nebraska. That's been part of our history. This is continuing that history on for the next fifty plus years. So that's the start with why. I'll go into a little background and history. Please, if you want to interrupt me at any point and ask any questions you may have, I want to make this as interactive and educational as possible. So as I mentioned, we've been powering Nebraska for more than fifty years. Our relationship and what we do together with our customers to serve the public of the state, I'm, I think is the, the model that everyone else should be envious of. Public power for something as critical to the quality of life and the economy, providing reliable, affordable, abundant energy, public power, in my opinion, does that better than any other form. And that's because we have these relationships. We have these discussions. Our customers sit on our board directors. Two of our customers represent you on our board of directors, Director Kemp and Director Olson, right? You have a direct role in that relationship and governance and oversight. So the benefits of public power, low cost, not for profit. We are only beholden to our customers. We don't have to worry about paying stockholders returns on their investment and making margins and those kinds of things. Any margin we make, any opportunity for profit is gravy, is what I like to call it. That's probably a little, a little too loose, but it's something that accrues to the community and to our customers. It doesn't go somewhere else to an investor from somewhere else. It's powered locally, controlled locally, owned locally, highly, highly reliable. Nebraska, I was just looking at the latest statistics today. We're like number one in infrastructure in the nation in the U S News and World Report. We're in the top three for reliability, top five, six for cost. So that again is reflection of the public power model and how well it works in the state. So this is who we are. At wholesale, we serve twenty-three public power districts or cooptors in the state. Twenty of those are part of the Nebraska Electric G N T. We have thirty-five wholesale municipalities. North Platte is one of them. You're our largest wholesale municipality. Almost eighty percent, just under eighty percent of the communities in the state of Nebraska get electricity either indirectly at wholesale or directly at retail from NPPD. We truly are the statewide utility in the state of Nebraska. We have a very diverse power mix. That's one of our strengths. That diversity allows us to manage and mitigate risk. In your backyard, the North Platte Hydro, been part of our system for a very long time, clean, reliable, carbon-free energy. Gerald Gentleman Station, Gerald Gentleman Station at Sutherland, one of the lowest-cost generating plants in the nation, very well run, very well run by members of this community and members of the surrounding area. Cooper Nuclear Station by Brownville, eight hundred megawatts of, of reliable, carbon-free energy. And then the mix of other hydro, the mix of other generating resources, gas resources, solar and wind resources allows us to manage that diverse mix in a way that, that helps ensure reliability and mitigate and manage risk and affordability for you. Our transmission system, we're the largest transmission operator in the state by far. We have over five thousand miles of transmission and we're ninety-nine point nine two percent in terms of transmission reliability, our transmission system availability, which again is really good. And this year's been a, this year's been a fun year. We've had our share of weather this year and plenty of storm damage, more than I would like to see, but it's kind of what we do. I was at a meeting about a month ago, the Eppery Summer Seminar, and I was talking to some of my peers from around the nation, and it was the weekend that the big storms came across the ninth and tenth of August. And so I'm talking about the two hundred miles of lines we have damaged and the work we're doing and the twenty million dollars or two hundred structures and the twenty million dollars of work. And we're like, I'm like, it's just another day in Nebraska, right? That's what we deal with. That's what we're here to manage risk and into addressing and keep the lights on. So wholesale power costs. Again, I said Nebraska is one of the most affordable states in the nation overall. And this is NPPD's statistics in terms of how we compare as a provider of wholesale electricity. So this includes our production costs and our transmission costs against a national benchmark, over eight hundred other large utility, large G N T utilities that serve end-use wholesale customers. We are in the lowest twelve and a half percentile in twenty twenty four. So it's about a year in arrears. We won't get the twenty twenty-five numbers until middle of the year next year. So that means we're almost in the lowest decile of cost. Our board has set a goal, a strategic directive, to keep our power costs in the lowest quartile as we move into the future. And this contract will help enable us together to do that, to better serve your customers, to better serve the people in North Platte and provide affordable electricity well into the future. We haven't had a wholesale rate increase for eight years. Over the past seven years, we've returned close to little under four hundred million dollars in terms of production cost adjustments back to our customers because our units and our system has been performing well in the marketplace. The, the excess margins of revenues we get from that marketplace, we can return to our customers. As you look into the future and think about us building this generation that's coming, and think about, well, how are we planning for that? And how will rates be impacted? With this new wholesale power contract, we expect to remain in the first quartile well into the future. Our current rate outlook, and every year we do a six-year view into the future to, to look at what the rates might be based on what we know today. And every year that gets updated and adjusted, right? But the current rate outlook for twenty-six, we have a recommendation in front of our board for a one percent wholesale rate increase. If you look out into the future years through thirty-one, it's two percent, two percent, three percent, three percent, and three percent. And, and in the last three years, that extra money is to start paying for these new resources as they come into service. But again, very modest rate increases when you think about the work that's in front of us and you read about what's happening in other parts of the nation in terms of rate increases are already seen. So I got to the why already. We've probably got about ten years of building assets in front of us. We want to finance those over the life of the asset. And actually, the asset lives will probably go a lot more than thirty or thirty-five years. But you want to, it's just like buying a house, right? If you want to manage how much you have to pay every year, you're probably going to think about getting a thirty-year mortgage versus a ten-year mortgage or a fifteen-year mortgage to help make it more affordable year after year. It's the same process here. And that's why the tie to the wholesale power contract. That's why thirty-five-year wholesale power contract gives us the flexibility to work together to finance in the best way possible to keep the rates as low as possible for you so that you can pass on those low rates to your customers. So a little bit more about our growing energy needs. I'm going to focus on the purple dash line first. The purple dash line is what we expect for our load growth plus the new load that we expect to be coming in. So you can see how in the twenty-nine and thirty and thirty-one and thirty-two timeframe, that goes up pretty significantly. And that's because of the six, seven hundred megawatts of new loads we got coming and plus the other six hundred megawatts, if you give or take, that we're working on after that. That changes over time, but I want to tell you first and foremost, because I hear this a lot, you're running out of power. Well, the purple line is what we need to serve. The purple line is what we need to serve. Those stacked columns, those stacked columns are the capability of our generating resources. All right. So we're not running out of power, first and foremost. We got plenty of generating resources to serve the load we need to serve. Now, when you look at it from a Southwest Power Pool resource adequacy standpoint, that's the black line. Okay, that's what we have to show for capability above our load to ensure that on a really bad day, and they don't happen that often, maybe it was one in twenty twenty-one, it may not happen for a long time. But on a really bad day, there's enough generation available to keep the chance of an outage at a low enough level. That's that one day and ten years thing. So that's the black line. Okay. And that's what we build to is that black line. It's way, it's above and beyond what we need to serve or load. It's what we need to have for capability and capacity to ensure expected amounts of reliability. Does that make sense? All right. So the blue is our existing resources, the blue bars. The green are short-term capacity purchases that we have brought into our system to help manage the load growth as we're building the new resources. So we've acquired capacity in a short term to give us that source adequacy margin as we build the new resources. The red bar is about seven hundred megawatts, a little less, for Princeton Road Station, which is the new power plant that we've announced north of Sheldon Station, south of Lincoln. Okay, that's going to be a combination of internal combustion engines and combustion turbines that are multi-fueled. And then the purple are three more combustion turbines, a little over another seven hundred megawatts that we'll be installing at Beatrice Power Plant to expand the capacity of the facility there. So those, the red stuff is in progress. We've issued contracts, our board approved contracts for the, the generators just last week for the, the major turbines. Breakers have been procured. We have a contract in place for the construction work that we're working through the details on. Those things are in progress. And on Friday of this week, we will be in front of the Power Review Board, getting the Power Review Board's certification of public need and necessity on the project and proceed forward. The purple ones we'll be bringing to the board before this end of the year, the, the contract documents to lock in the production dates. So we lock in our production slots. And we're still evaluating whether we're going to do one a year as it looks like there, or whether we'll compress them together. It'll be depend on a couple of things. One, the, how's the load growth looking? And then two, what's the best way to manage construction risk? So we're looking at that. But they are So we're looking at that, but they are gonna, they are going to get built. You can see at the bottom, I mentioned the planning reserve margin for the summer, how it's going from fifteen percent to seventeen percent and higher in the future. There's another winter graph, the winter graph is going from fifteen percent to thirty-eight percent in the future. But for us, the summer is the controlling graph. Questions? So a little bit more about the power plants, and again, the generation, the diverse generation resource makes you can see the history. Clear back to the seventies with Gerald Gentleman Station construction, Cooper Nuclear Station construction. Um, the peaking units at McCook and Hebron and Hallam. Uh, as we started to build out renewable resources in the early two thousands, Nebraska City were a participant in the old P P D unit there. Beatrice Power Station in the early two thousands, and then as we looked at the future with Princeton Road Station and the Beatrice combustion turbines. You can see the details on, on the chart in terms of the reciprocating internal combustion engines, combustion turbines. Um, I guess one other thing I want to mention is from a resiliency standpoint, they're going to be multi-fuel capable, right? So we're not going to rely on just one fuel supply, gives us some more, uh, flexibility again, how we work to manage risk for all of you. And then, um, so this is an interesting graph that I think is really important because it talks about our history since we were formed in nineteen seventy. And the, um, the total debt line is in blue in nominal dollars, if you put that in twenty, twenty-four dollars, it's the red line. And then, uh, the debt to revenue ratio, which is on the right axis is the light green line. Thinking about our investments since nineteen seventy and twenty-twenty-four dollars, the amount of debt in today's dollars that we together took on to build Gerald Gentleman Station and Cooper Nuclear Station and the, um, peaking turbines was close to nine billion dollars. And that's paid down over time and there's a little bump with Nebraska City and, um, the Beatrice Power Station and some of those things in the early two thousands, and then you can see what we're planning for right now. Where we'll be at about four billion dollars debt when these new projects are in place. So we've done this together before. We've addressed these issues as Nebraskans before to serve the growing loads and the needs of the local economy. That's what we're doing here again today with this new contract. You know, some of the products we offer in the contract, demand waiver programs, probably not as applicable to you, but there's all sorts of other things. Uh, simultaneous buy-sell, standby service, large customer interruptible rates, we've talked with you about many of those things. Market-based rates, energy curtailment rates, economic development rates. Interruptable market-based rates, we, we've worked really hard to develop flexibility in our products and flexibility in our rates to serve the needs of our growing load, to serve the needs of our customers. And as we work with you to attract and develop new loads in this community. We have lots of things in the toolbox that are flexible, that can help. And we're committed to being innovative and thinking about even new ways to bring and serve new loads that are interested in coming to this community. The other thing we do, um, local generation, um, community solar, uh, helping hand when needed. We talked about the storms this summer and how, how we help each other out when the chips are down. Um, help the communities when there's outages. Um, and then again, the partnership to find new and innovative ways to serve your customers. So that's kind of the overview. Any questions? We can get into the details of the contract changes if you would like. Yes, sir.
Thank you, um, I don't know if this is you or C N P P D, but, um, C N I P P D, I guess. On that Perkins County Canal that's being proposed, are there going to be any opportunities for hydro power on that?
That's a good question, it's something we're working on together, um. Right now, there's proposals for, for reservoirs to storage and regulate, but I don't, I'm not aware of any proposals for new hydro. But certainly that additional water would help make the existing hydro more available, if that makes sense. Because that'll flow through the system down through their hydros and our hydro, excluding Kingsley. But it would flow down through, likely flow down through North Platte and their hydros in the Carney area and our Carney hydro before it's done. So that, that water supply is critical for Nebraska. It assures that we get our winter supply from the nineteen-twenty, whatever compact it was that we signed with, with Colorado. Um, so it's a very, very important to do, um, I don't know that there'll be new generation associated with it. Answer your question. Yes, sir.
I don't even know if I want to go into this subject at all right here, but we do hear with data processing, things like that, that it seems like everyone wants to bring a solar project with that. And I'm loosely, I don't know a whole lot about that, is, is that a necessity from your standpoint? You know, there's a lot of talk of solar and wind, and then there's also talk of the, you know, Gerald Gentleman is fifty, sixty years old, you know? Uh, so just a, your big picture on that and what we need to look at as your customers. And if you want to have high-energy capacity projects here and what that does to us, if you don't mind, I'd love to hear it from the horse's mouth.
Absolutely, so, um, the, the sentiment is shifting a little bit for now, just the larger political kind of thing, you know, I want to kind of stay away from the, the details there, but wind and solar are always a valuable part of the solution, but when you're looking at a, a load like a data center, okay? They typically want to have a high load factor, which means they want to be running all the time. So while wind and solar can provide, uh, carbon-free energy, which they find important, right? They aren't going to be there every hour of the day, right? And that's where the resource adequacy discussion comes in. So can wind and solar be part of the solution? Absolutely, but some way you have to back that up. So you're, um, able to provide that firm energy, uh, that meets their needs. And then one of the opportunities that we work with on a case-by-case basis is how to get them to the carbon-free level they want. And that's why today, when you look at what's easiest to build besides wind and solar, that also has the ability to back it up and run it. Um, it's gas, that's why we're looking at gas. So yeah, a solar plant has a capacity value for resource adequacy that's maybe in that twenty-five percent range of whatever the nameplate is. Uh, wind facility is maybe in that thirty-five percent range, maybe less, depending on the facility and the wind regime um, of what its nameplate is. And a gas facility, its value, or a nuclear facility, its value, or a coal facility, its value is pretty much really close to whatever the nameplate is. So as you're trying to figure out what the right mix is, you got to account for the, I, I got to satisfy this resource adequacy need too. And that's what moves us to use gas, gas right now as part of that solution. Specific to Gerald Gentleman Station, um, yeah, it's in that fifty-ish years old. It's well-maintained, it's well-taken care of, it is one of the lowest-cost generating resources in the nation. And we continue to comply with all the environmental requirements. And we will continue to do that as far in the future as we can, because it's a great value creator for the people of the state of Nebraska. Will we always be generating with the same boilers that burn coal a day at Gerald Gentleman Station? Maybe not, we'll assess that as we move into the future and it's a, it's, it's what's the better alternative? Change this or something new, will we always be making electricity at Gerald Gentleman Station? Absolutely, it's got everything else we need. It's, we want to maximize and lengthen out the value it provides because it's a huge value creator, not only for the local economy but for the state of Nebraska as long as we can.
Thank you.
Yep.
Could, could you talk to us for a minute about us being a large wholesale municipality provider? I, I knew we were the largest one in our segment, but I didn't realize there was, there was quite as big a gap on that or there wasn't as many communities. So how are the other communities our size doing it, what are the pros and cons? Um, how do you, if you could give us a little bit of a state of the union on that, I would very much appreciate it.
So your peers in the state, um, Grand Island, they provide their own resources, they, they provide their own generation resources for their community, Fremont does the same. So they have, they have a hundred percent of the generation and market risk for their community on them. Where you're relying on us to manage it, Hastings would be in the same way. Norfolk and Carney, they're a little bit different, again, Scotts Bluff, a little bit different. They are retail customers of N P P D, so we lease their system from them and we operate it as part of our retail utility. So basically, it's a hundred, I, I would like to think it's a hundred percent headache-free for the city, right? We have an agreement, the city gets X amount of dollars a year and we take care of all the stuff, we do all the rates, we deal with all the issues. You, you all have the advantage of us managing the generation risk for you, which is huge. And you retain local control of things like rate-making and dealing with someone that's unhappy about their bill. So, to answer your question.
Yeah.
Lane lives it every day, so, how'd I do?
Yeah.
I like how you described that as an opportunity. Dealing with the irate customer.
But it's also, we have the control that is where, new generate, or not new generation, but new lines and, and then infrastructure. How are we going to deal with that, you know, going forward?
For the communities we serve at retail, we work closely with the community's planning organization, right? Because we want to make sure that the infrastructure we build provides what they need as they think about their planning needs and stuff, which, you know, we do here, but we do from a transmission level. So that's a little bit of difference.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, with regard to the contract, I promise I won't drag you through the details. It, it appears to me that's highly similar to the one that's ten years old. With the exception of the provision for future rate changes. Is there anything else substantially different in the contract that we should be aware of?
Well, you have in front of you the, the brochure with the major changes in it, so I, I know you've got it all. I just, I would, I would hit on a couple of things that I think are really, uh, significant difference from where we are today. You know, we talked about the term already. We're going to, the current contract has a power resource advisory board and a rate review committee that's made up of customers. And I think North Platte sits on both of those. Um, but they're not very active, right? Because most of the time we end up having those discussions in front of all the customers. So we decided with this contract, with feedback from the customers to, to help facilitate more intentional engagement to create a customer committee. And it's modeled somewhat on what the Southwest Power Pool does with their members committee. I sat on the Southwest Power Pool Members Committee for twelve years. And it's, it's representatives of their membership that sit with their board at their board meetings and provide advice. So it's a more formal engagement, so that's really what the customer committee is with, with, uh, eleven representatives to start with, North Platte would be one. It gives you a chance on specific issues to interact more directly with the board and more intentionally with the board. Doesn't change the fact that we won't come out here with Director Kemp and Olson and do board forums. It doesn't change the fact that we won't, we'll continue to have our every other month customer board, customer management meetings. It's just around certain issues to have a more intentional discussion with customers sitting together with our board. Um, resource planning, strategic planning, rates, budgets, offering the contract to someone new, those are really the big areas. So that's one big thing. The other big thing, probably the biggest thing is the, the early termination and exit provision. The current contract, um, you have no ability to exit unless our costs get too high, right? And when we started this process two years ago, we spent out, sent it, went out and spent time one-on-one with each of our wholesale customers. And one of the things we heard pretty clearly is we want the flexibility in the future, but we also don't want to be harmed if someone else decides they want to do something different with the flexibility. So the current contract doesn't really provide for that, um, it leaves whoever's left holding whatever's left. So that's the big change, this contract provides for, okay, you can exit if you want to and it's more wide open in the future. After ten years, after, uh, the end of twenty thirty-five, you can, we can start exit, uh, executing on these provisions. If someone decides they want to leave, all right. But they have to pay their share of whatever the outstanding debt principle is at that time for our production facilities. It's basically, we've built these facilities together to serve everybody and that's our way to protect North Platte in case someone else wants to leave, so that's a big difference. We also got a lot of feedback on the, that performance metric that I showed and wanting to keep that in the contract in some fashion. It's in the contract today, so what we settled on is keeping the contract as a way, keeping it in the contract as a metric to, if our costs get too high, reduce your exit fee. So it, it keeps us in the game to make sure we're managing costs, right? It reduces your exit fee by up to twenty percent. We ended up putting it as incentive because we need to get this done. So if you sign, if you elect to sign the contract before October thirty-first, you have that as part of your package, that exit fee. Offset provision based on the performance metric, if you sign after October thirty-first, you don't. So that's a big difference. Um, qualifying local generation, pretty much the same, but allows more flexibility. If you can't use your ten percent, you can, um, transfer it to another wholesale customer that can, or vice versa. If you can use more than ten percent and another wholesale customer can't, there's a process for you to go above the ten percent. Um, arbitration, not a huge deal, but, uh, in my perspective, but it, to me, it's a, a way to make sure that if we ever have an issue, we're working together to resolve it and it keeps it out of the courts, establish an arbitration panel. So the statutes provide for that today with regard to rate disputes. So we're basically using that same process for any dispute regarding the contract. It's interesting, in the fifty-plus years we've been in existence, there's only been two cases of disputes, so it doesn't happen very often. Early termination, oh, and then this was a feature of the previous contracts, it's not in the current contract, but it would allow you to cap your purchases from N P P D. So we get down the road ten years and you're like, I got this opportunity to do something different, uh, for my load growth. Gives you the flexibility to have that discussion, maybe something different is doing your own thing. Maybe that's something different is partnering with N P P D on a specific resource that we, I don't know, put out here in North Platte. Uh, maybe that's something different is getting your load growth from another entity, it just gives you the flexibility to do that. We've had that in our contracts from two thousand and two up until the twenty sixteen contract, we put it back into this contract just as a way, again, to provide some flexibility. No one's, no one's ever used it, but it's there. To answer your question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much. Other questions?
Yes, how does it, let's say we have a large industry that wants to generate their own power and has access that would tie to the city of North Platte. How, how does that work? How to, how does, can they, can they just generate excess power? If they do, where does it go? How does that, how does that work?
So if they're generating for their own use, no problem, it's provided for today. If they're generating to put power onto the grid, onto the market, we would have to work with the city and us to put the agreements in place to provide for that to happen.
As, as you guys are looking at load allocation for new industries, how does, how does the the amount of jobs being created fall into your decision-making on where you're going to be willing to allocate larger industrial loads versus? Uh, so in other words, let's say you had a, a crypto miner that's going to have three people working, who's going to use a similar load to an industry that would have five hundred full-time employees, how do you guys? How, how does that enter into your decision-making process?
So we work really hard to work with the local community economic developers and understand what their targets are and drive to meet their targets. Because I can tell you that we have some of our wholesale customers that will get a lot of value and are getting a lot of value of the, out of these crypto miners because it gives them a better load profile. Um, but that may not be the best fit for another community. So if your target is we want to get something that's got five hundred jobs with it, then that's what we'll work with you to do, or try.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, Mr. Kent, thank you very much for coming tonight. We appreciate our long partnership with N P P D as the city of North Platte, it's a great asset to our area. Lots of jobs, lots of good things, and we look forward to, uh, having some more power generation in the area sometime in the future.
We do as well, we appreciate the very long partnership we've had with the city of North Platte and look forward to that extending well into the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Last opportunity for questions. Okay, this meeting is a Okay, this meeting is adjourned, we'll reconvene as the city council in about twenty-three minutes at five thirty P M. Very much, everyone.